2021 at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Approval of gen- agenda. Statement from Vice Chair regarding town report issue. Board discussion, public comment adjourned, and executive personnel.
Oh, that needs to be.
That needs to be turned around.
There needs to be personnel.
Then.
Uh, disciplinary.
Personnel discipline, okay. Okay, can I entertain the motion to accept, please?
You can motion accept the agenda.
Five seconds.
Second.
Mike.
Hi.
Jamie.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Angie, hi. Bob.
Hi.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna start with Mike, Vice Chair, regarding the town report issue.
First, I'm gonna start with, um, rules and conduct for tonight's meeting. This is something we started a couple meetings ago, and tonight is definitely, um, definitely we need to take care of that tonight. We understand this is a very important meeting, and also that citizens may want to have additional comments or questions. This issue affects all citizens. Because of that, if time allows, we will allow multiple comments and questions to the best of our ability. We need to maintain order. Please raise your hand if you want to speak. We will call on you and ask you to unmute yourself. Please refrain from personal attack and debating. Keep your comments respectful. If you unmute yourself once without being asked, you will be given a warning. If you unmute yourself again, you will be removed from the meeting. If you need to alert the host of something urgent, please use the chat box. However, please know that the chat box is not part of the public record, and it will be shut down if it is used for discussion among participants. If you are on cat TV, if they are present, which they are, we will do our best to recognize you. My statement. It is with incredible regret the Select Board has had to call this emergency meeting tonight. However, we have no other option than to do this. We have an issue of great importance that we need to convey to the Town of Pownall. Yesterday, Monday, I walked into the town office and saw nine large postal service crates filled with town reports sitting on the table. There was no note or expla- explanation as to why they were there. So I began asking questions, calling people to understand why so many town reports were sitting in the office, when they're supposed to have already been delivered to residents. The last thirty-six hours has been nonstop investigation of this issue. Here is what we have learned. This is an approximate timeline. Now, it's not, it's just an approximation, okay? Town staff was first notified about an issue with the town reports on Thursday by the post office. The Select Board and the Board Liaison were not notified of any issue regarding the reports until Monday, when I walked into the office and started asking questions. The mistaken mailing apparently happened because of an error in the spreadsheet that contained mailing addresses. Town staff attempted to begin rectifying the situation by applying corrected address labels on the returned reports to get them back in the mail. This work began Monday afternoon. The amount of returned reports is estimated to be approximately eleven hundred, meaning at least one-third of our voters did not receive their reports within the statutory deadline. That's a very conservative estimate. We have no way to know the amount of reports that were actually delivered with wrong addresses on them. We have received several reports of citizens receiving the report even though the address on them was wrong. Upon my direction, our liaison immediately began reaching out to the Secretary of State, the VLCT, and Town Council to discuss the situation and find out the legal ramifications of this issue. We are going to ask her to go over what she learned from them. However, the short story is that the state statute requires the town report is mailed or otherwise delivered no less than ten days before the town meeting. Monday was six days before town meeting. Many of the reports were not returned to the post office until after closing yesterday, Monday. Those additional reports were likely mailed today, which is five days before town meeting. We are clearly in violation of this statute. We have no way of knowing if these reports will even make it to their destinations in time for town meeting at this point. It has been determined that the mistake that caused the error in mailing is due to town error, not due to an error with the postal service or the printer. We will discuss this in more detail in our board discussion. We are asking town officials and staff who were involved with this issue to help with our discussion tonight, so that we can offer the town full and complete transparency. We're going to hear from Rebecca about what the legal ramifications are of this problem and the potential solutions, and she will, um, give us the statutes. I don't normally spell the statutes out, but tonight we will spell out what statutes, uh, we have to follow. Lastly, we're going to decide as a board what path we're going forward to attempt and rectify this problem, and what will hopefully be the way that does not disenfranchise any voters in the process. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mike. Rebecca?
Okay, so, well, Gary simply said, the, um, the first place I reached out to was the VLCT. That's always where I'll go first, um, for, uh, any, they give general legal advice. I also went directly to the Secretary of State. And the, the statute states that the town report must be, um, mailed or otherwise delivered no less than ten days from the date of the town meeting. So, um, because of that, puts us in a precarious situation, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of walk you through my conversations with each, with each of these entities, and then, so you know, I didn't just have individual conversations with the VLCT, the Secretary of State, and our Town Council. Our Town Council also spoke to the Secretary of State and the head lawyer at the VLCT, and they also conferred on this issue. Um, if it had been, for instance, a post office mistake, uh, something like that, and maybe just a couple hundred of the town reports got lost, you, the recommendation would have been to do a certification post the election, where you would create a resolution and say you certify the action that was taken at that election, and the Select Board could have done that with a two-thirds majority, which is a majority vote. And, um, however, um, the general consensus and guidance is, is because eleven hundred at least of our citizens, we know, do not have the information delivered to them that they need to participate in the election, um, that, that, the, the, the guidance is that we need to rewarn the entire election and do the town warning again. Issue a, uh, cancellation of town meeting, um, it's starting from square one. So it is not square one in the sense of everybody has to turn in their papers again, or we have to do petitions again. It's the same ballot. Um, it's the same candidates, it's the same ballot articles. Um, however, it's a new town meeting rewarn, that was the advice. There was a nod to, you could go forward with a certification afterwards. However, that's not their recommendation, um, especially after, um, Mr. Fisher spoke with both the VLCT head lawyer and the Secretary of State. However, that is a consideration that you're welcome to discuss, um, which would be going forward with it now. Now, because of COVID, um, the Secretary of State has given waivers whereby we are able to, um, we are able to, um, postpone town meetings this year, Select Boards are able to do that. And, um, I asked, well, but this is a town error, this is not due to COVID. So, can, can we still work under that waiver? And the answer was that yes, we can, especially since this is a pretty, this is a pretty big deal. And also, there was an error, as we know, on the ballot. It does give, uh, an opportunity to, to fix that error. It was a minor error, we would have been able to do certification with that error, no problem. Um, it set a, a two-year term instead of one-year term under Select Board. So that, that's, those are my conversations with folks in, um, all the folks that know what they're doing and know what, and, and, and give us advice. So, uh, if any of the board has any questions about any of that, I'm happy to, um, if you have any questions about what I've done, I, I, you know, as I've, my, my entire knowledge of this situation is, is this side of it, is going and asking these questions and doing this research, so. If anyone has anything for me.
I think that, well, just thank you for doing the research. Um, that was, that was pretty clear. Um, it is, uh, not a, uh, not a desirable situation, and not a, not a good situation to be in. Um, but, um, I'm glad that, uh, I'm glad we're now talking about it and we can do something to remediate it. And we want, whatever we do, we need to make sure that no one is disenfranchised.
Exactly.
I, I think, in my, in my opinion on this, um, on Rebecca's, in my opinion on Rebecca's research, I've been working with her extensively the last two days on this, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And, um, I, I believe we have extremely accurate information from all three parties. And as she stated, um, all three parties talked with each other, and, you know, and came up with the same ideas. So, I, you know, I just, I just want to make sure that everybody out there, because we have a large audience tonight, knows that we really did a tremendous amount of homework on this the last two days. It has consumed an enormous amount of time.
And, uh, just to clarify, when you say all three parties, you mean the town attorney, the Secretary of State, and the head of the VLCT?
Yes, absolutely, Bob, thank you. Yes, yep, all three parties. All three legal parties involved, yes.
Alright, Rebecca, thank you. Make sure whoever's talking has a microphone in front of them.
Okay.
I think it's helping quite a lot, actually, listening to it, then.
Sure, um.
Loud.
Well.
They're saying they can't hear you.
Uh, I, I guess, uh, at this point, the only, uh,
Where are we gonna, are we, are we a board discussion?
Yes, we're the board discussion.
You're a board discussion.
Okay, that's okay. Just wanna make sure where we're at.
Yep.
Alright, um, I would like to understand if, uh, errors happen, and you can forgive the, uh, the, the, uh, you know, it's just the fact that the names didn't line up to the addresses, is what I understood.
Right, so, so can I make one statement, Bob, not to interrupt you?
Go ahead.
I, 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 before we get into board discussion on, on back and forth on the what ifs and what haves and how it did, I think as a board, me, I, I, and I think I can speak for every single one of you guys out here, I want to apologize to every candidate who was on the ballot and who has spent time doing and money, time campaigning. I also want to apologize to all the organizations that are out there, that are on our ballots for, um, you know, now, we're, we're out some time, you know, they're not gonna know what they're, you know, if they complain on the money from the Town of Pownall, you know, and I'm gonna use, uh, Brock and Pave as examples, okay, just because they popped into my head. But those, all of the ballot article organizations, um, I think as a board, me personally, I'm not gonna speak for the board, me personally, as the Vice Chair of this board, I apologize, genuinely apologize to you, and I am genuinely sorry. And, we can go from there, board discussion from. And to the citizens, exactly, you know. Rebecca, thank you, Bob. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, that, that's quite all right, um. I, I, I guess, uh, I'm, I'm a little beside myself. This is, uh, uh, it's, it's, it's definitely not a good situation, and one thing I just wanted to point out is that, uh, you know, I'm checking my email, I'm trying to see what exactly is happening. I didn't find out about this until after you did, and after, uh, it's disappointing that I didn't have anything in my email to tell me that this happened. In fact, the only thing I have is the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Right.
Yes, I think, uh, I feel the same way, Bob, that, uh, kind of blindsided if there's an issue that the Select Board needs to know, the whole Select Board needs to know that there's an issue going on. Um, therefore, I mean, it's possible that we may be able to assist, um, in a way that I've come down here before and helped, so. I just, I was kind of dumbfounded when I heard this, so. This, it was out of the blue. And, uh, we definitely need to rectify this and going forward, we attempt to put some checks and balances in so we can, you know, don't have it happen again. But, uh, now, I mean, we know it's happened, now we need to resolve it, and so we can move on and set a new date, I'm, from what I'm gathering from, uh, all the legals. So, no.
Well, I think we still have to discuss and decide how we're doing it, but I think you're probably right. I think we're all gonna lean toward the, the, uh, recommendations that we got from the attorney.
Okay, um, who does the addresses?
Would you like me to unmute?
I, I think we should unmute Dave and Adams and Julie.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Just a moment, it'll take me a moment to find everybody. Oh, boy. Um, actually, Dave and Julie, could you unmute yourselves? It would be easier if you could just do it, because I, it's a long list of people. And let us know when you're unmuted, please.
Unmuted.
Okay, great, thanks, Dave, and Julie's unmuted as well, I see her at the top, go ahead.
Unmuted.
Thank you, Julie and Dave. I was just wondering, who does the address report? Where did the wrong addresses come from?
The wrong addresses came during the process of generating the, uh, file to go to the printer. Uh, the town clerk, Julie, supplies me with a one-hundred percent list of the, uh, voters of the Town of Pownall. I take that list and use Excel to do a number of things to it, because the data that's supplied to me is broken down into individual fields, such as the street address is in one field, the, the street name is in another field. If it's a PO box number, there's a PO box number and the number, all in one field. That's one example on addresses. On the names, the names come through as last name field, first name field, middle name or initial field, and any subsequent indication like junior, senior, or so on.
Right.
Those fields have to be put together in order to go onto the, uh, onto the address label. That is a part of the processing that I do. The same thing is true of the addresses that I spoke of. I have to bring those together such that a street address and the street name come together. Or if it's just a PO box number, that just the PO box, PO space box space number, that that all remains intact. When it comes to city, state, and zip code, I do nothing with them, I leave them separate, because when it goes to the printer, the printer has the software that basically, the technical term is concatenates them together. The, the words that will help everybody understand is it takes the city, it adds the state, oh, it takes the city, it adds the comma, it adds the state, and then it puts together the zip code, which is a five-digit zip code.
Okay, Dave, thank you.
Uh, well, there's one more piece to this.
Okay.
That, that file, uh, the printer then generally sends that file or applies that file to the zip code database of the United States Postal Service and applies the four-digit zip codes. That did not happen this year.
But the, uh, but I think what I'm, I think what I'm gleaming is that somehow the name emerging all the time, the, the, uh, the, is really the, the, the last first name of the individual, and somehow that got mismatched with the, uh, with the.
That's exactly what happened, and I, I, I have no explanation, it happened on my computer. Uh, it's very strange when you sort a bunch of records and they disengage them, the fields disengage themselves and realign themselves. I've never had it happen in thirty-five years, so it's the first for me, I've never seen it before, and I did not detect it before I, uh, sent the file onto the printer. And so it happened on my computer, and, uh, I have no explanation for it. I have not even been able to determine a pattern as to, well, how many spaces off or how many addresses off was the address. I just have not been able to find a pattern as to what happened.
Okay, thank you, Dave. So Linda, um, you were notified on Thursday, is that correct?
Yes, I did, it was Thursday, I thought it was Friday, but it was Thursday, we still have a meeting. She notified me as she was leaving. At that time, the ballot was. No. No, I think they came on Saturday. Is that correct, Julie?
I didn't hear any word you said.
Did the ballot?
Sorry.
Getting me mixed up with the ballots. Did the town reports arrive here on Saturday?
Well, I had. Um, on Thursday, we were notified at like three-thirty in the afternoon that we had four totes of undeliverable, um, town reports from Linda at the post office. So I said, okay, we asked if we could pick them up on Friday, you know, Friday afternoon, so that we could bring them back to the office. So they were picked up Friday afternoon, um, and then that's when we found out that there was nine totes. I had worked on Saturday for the early voting, and I had put all the totes on the back table with new printing labels of addresses so that we could start working on them. And like I said, I didn't call anybody on Saturday because I honestly didn't even think about it that, you know, it was a weekend, and it never dawned on me that we had to do the town reports.
She said within the ten days, correct?
Yes.
I'm gonna make sure that when you, uh,
Talking, they say who they are. That was Julie Weber, our town.
Oh, sorry.
Pass the speaker around so that people can hear us.
Yes, sorry, it's hard.
And to speak up.
To remember. I'm just a little dumbfounded why nobody, like, like either you, Linda, or Julie, somebody didn't call us to let us know, because I would have been here in an instant to help, to help put all the things on and get them out.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I understand that everybody says that they were, you know, if they knew that they would all come in on Saturday to help us. However, I just got done mailing ballots out on Saturday, I mailed the last seventy-five ballots out. I honestly did not even think of the ten-day thing or to even let you guys know that they were there, because I figured that we could work on them on Monday and just like pump them back out because we had all the new labels. I understand that, you know, people are disappointed with us. However, I don't have enough words to say, so I'm just gonna leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Julie. Does anybody have anything to ask?
Who's, isn't it the Select Board's responsibility to make sure that those go out and not to town clerk, correct? The, the town reports are the responsibility of the Select Board, our employees, not the town clerk.
That, that's my understanding.
That's the statute, correct. Uh, yes, as is the town warning.
Right, okay, but I, right, town warnings are, um, I believe that's all town warnings, correct?
Uh, it's all town, all town warnings, which is something that I did not know until.
Till we started investigating.
Yes.
Exactly, okay, so, so I, I, I just wanted to make that clear, Julie, that this is, this is really not your responsibility. This falls off the Select Board's responsibility, okay? I, I want that to be clear.
Can I make another suggestion, or do you want me to wait in a little while? My, my only thing is that we were always to work together. And, you know, I'm, like I said, I'm sorry that we didn't tell you guys. It never even, like I said, it never even dawned on me to even let you guys know. I just figured that we could do this and that we're all supposed, you know, like, work together and, you know, because that's what we're supposed to do. However, I don't know, I'll let you guys continue.
Thank you, Julie.
Yes, I would just, yeah, I do know that the office works together. These large items, such as the sewer and the ballots and the town warning, so. I just wish somebody had taken and notified the board, that's all.
We're not trying to blame anybody.
And hindsight is twenty-twenty, and we, uh, this is a big learning curve, obviously, for the board because we didn't realize the timeframe.
You knew the timeframe, and it was, they were originally mailed out within the timeframe, so, yeah.
Yeah, the original, as far as we didn't know about the mistake, I guess, is where I met. Sorry.
Alright, does anybody have anything else to add or ask?
Oh, I, I have something to add.
Okay.
Um, I actually reached out today to, um, I reached out today to Preferred Building Systems, because I wanted to be certain that they would hold their prices for the new town hall project, and they indicated to me that, yes, they would hold their prices to April sixteen, which means that if you do decide to postpone this election, that it must be before then, and that my advice would be we have all of our financing ducks lined up in a row so that the minute, God willing, we get that approval for the project to go forward, that we sign the papers and can break, you know, just get it done, just get it done. That falls right in line with our groundbreaking timeline anyway, as you really can't break ground until April, just because of weather and the ground. Um, but, um, that was a, a small piece of good news in this, was that they will hold their prices. He indicated that, um, in general, uh, construction materials have gone up since the last price thing, six percent, but they're willing to hold that down for us. So I did, I, I reached out today, I just wanted to be sure we were covered there.
Thank you, Rebecca.
That's very good.
Very good news, very, very good news. So as a board, we have to decide what we want to do. Do we want to take any public comment first? Yes, let's take.
I think that's a good idea.
Let's take public comment first.
Are, are we done discussing it as a board, what's the situation?
You probably have more to say after we hear what.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're at.
Please raise your hand, and please say who you are, and then ask your question or comment, please. And we are keeping it to three minutes, and Mike is gonna be the timekeeper.
Okay, so, um, we have here, um, this is Jim. I'm assuming it is Jim Kosis.
Hello?
No, I don't know.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, there you go.
Okay, uh, first of all, I really, really, really want to give you guys a lot of credit for everything that you've done this weekend, um, to put this all together, to try to figure out how do we can make this correction. Um, I have three things.
I'm sorry.
Cutting out.
I'm sorry. Um, maybe I'm talking too fast. Um. All right, the issue number, there is a couple more issues in this whole thing. Uh, number one is that you have to take into account that come March second is also the voting for the schools. And I know that they have warned them, um, properly. And so we have to make sure whatever happens, uh, voting on March second still has to, um, occur, in my opinion. Um, second of all, just to add to the situation, um, I'm not sure if it was required that the, um, school ballots were also mailed out, um, with all the other ballots. Um, so in that case, I didn't receive one, so, um, I'm not sure if it was just something that, um, may not have happened. And then the, the one last third issue, which maybe, I'm not sure how this can be rectified, but to answer the question, and I'm gonna just bring up something here. First of all, the, um, the, um, statute of, um, Title twenty-four says the auditors shall report their findings in writings and cause the same to be mailed or otherwise distributed to the voters. All right? But then if you go to one last paragraph in that, it says if the town has voted to eliminate the Office of Auditors, the findings of the public accountant employed in accordance with the statutes shall be mailed or otherwise distributed by the select board in the same manner. Okay? Yes, I agree that it was in the hands of the select board to get these out because we do not have auditors in place. But I am, I have gone through the audit, I mean, the annual report many times and I cannot find a statement by the auditors or a statement by the accountants as of the findings of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. And I know we're still in the process, but I'm just wondering what the ramifications of not being able to have information like that in the audit. Thank you very much and have a wonderful day.
Jim, I just want to say the last meeting we had at the end, I said that you could ask another question. For some reason, you were disconnected. I want to apologize for that. I don't know what happened.
Oh, in the last meeting? No, oh, no, basically it was, I, I, I'm just curious. I, I'm, I'm a favor of, um, certain things being a flat tax and I, I just was wondering, um, where the stipulations were. I've looked everywhere and I couldn't find that a flat tax, um, was not allowed anywhere. It doesn't, it, there's a lot of interpretations and that's unpro, that's unfortunate with the statutes that were written many years ago. Whether it's a flat tax or an assessed tax, I'm still voting yes for this town hall because we do need it. And that's a separate issue from tonight. Thank you very much.
I can answer the first two questions and you might have to stay unmuted, Jim, and help me remember them all, okay?
Well, uh, uh, be, before, I mean, I don't want to go on to that issue. This is more important tonight and the annual meeting, um, than.
No, we're not discussing that issue that you just brought up. Uh, your first two questions, I want you to stay unmuted because I don't want to miss any of them, okay?
Sure.
Okay, so March second, the school, that absolutely must still happen. It will be two separate elections if they decide to go this route. Secondly, regarding the ballots for the school, that is a school decision. Um, the town made the decision to mail all ballots preemptively to all voters. The school did not want to do that. So therefore, the only people who received school ballots in the mail are people who are already on an absentee ballot list. Um, I agree, it's very confusing, but, uh, we double-checked also. I believe, Mike, you called the school correct.
I, I did. And the only other thing, the only other thing, Jim, if they weren't mailed to absentee voters, um, previous absentee ballots, people could have requested the school ballot in, in their, um, mailing. And I, I reached out to the school system, the SBSU, um, yesterday and covered that to make sure that we were correct in that.
Okay, no, that's fine. I, I guess I got my ballot on Saturday and I, I expected to see it, but unfortunately, I just noticed just now when I was thinking about, uh, March second for the schools, that mine wasn't in there. I am on the list probably for absentee ballot, so hopefully, um, Julie, is it still possible it's gonna be in the mail?
If you did not receive, here you go. Sorry, Julie, go ahead.
I can put it in the mail. I can do it tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine.
Or what I've been doing because some people haven't gotten, because they don't request them all the time, that I've emailed a couple of people and to let them know if they didn't get a school ballot, that they are more than welcome to come into the office tomorrow and Thursday, nine to four-thirty to get the school ballot or come in on Sunday when I'm there for early voting, ten to two. Or they can come in on Monday when I'm there, nine to four-thirty, to request the school ballot or to vote in the office. Or they're more than welcome to come to the polls on Tuesday.
Okay, um, if you just throw it in the mail tomorrow, I'd appreciate it. Um, and, and that, and just, uh, just to add to the whole situation, unfortunately, I have a daughter that is in graduate school, um, and I was unable to really get it mailed up to her and then brought back, so, um, but that's an issue I have of my own, so, thank you.
Okay, Jim, so I'm muting you, Jim. And the next person in line is Jenny. Jenny, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi there. Um, I'm gonna talk fast because I have a bunch of things to say. With regards to being blindsided, folks, there's a violation of open meeting law. You can't, the, uh, when Mike found this out, he couldn't tell the rest of you. Um, I couldn't hear a single word that Linda said. She's the one who is your executive assistant who should have informed you. I'm not sure why that didn't happen. Why was Dave Adams dealing with the Excel and the addresses instead of Linda? Um, I'm, I'm tired of hearing we've always done it this way. Um, nothing happened this weekend. I appreciate Jim saying thank you, but it didn't happen this weekend because we were just told they didn't find out until Monday. Um, I want to know how many, uh, how did over a thousand reports sit in the town office without anyone being notified of the problem for that many days? Um, why did the town staff not inform the select board? Um, that's why you didn't know. It's your town staff who did not inform you. Julie is not town staff. Um, Dave is not town staff. How did a thou, uh, what is the financial cost of this error? Um, I want to know how much money is spent to date on the election, how much it'll cost to have a new election? Um, what's the cost of sending out all the ballots again? Um, da-da-da-da, uh, what, yeah, the cost, what's the cost to re-warn? And how do we know it's not gonna happen again? Thank you.
Uh, okay, do you want me to try to break some of that down? Okay. Um, I'm going to, let's see, I, I can break down how, I think, let's talk about maybe cost first if you want to. If Julie, I don't know how much it costs, but Julie can give us a, uh, an idea of that, Julie?
We're not gonna know the actual cost of an election until after the election when they, the LHS sends us billing of how much it costs for the ballot printing and all that. We won't know the cost until after the election.
Do you have an estimate based on what we've already done? Here you go, Mike.
And the only thing that I know that for a cost that we've done is the forty-eight, forty-two hundred in postage. Because we can't calculate the hours because I had like ten people helping prep the ballots and get them ready and stuff and like that, so we, we won't know the cost until after the election because their hours of working at the polls is included in it, so we won't know the cost until after the election.
That's a big cost. Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Okay, so just so I'm clear on this, okay, the forty-two hundred dollars in postage was for ballots and town reports?
No. The forty-two hundred counted because we had to mail out, hold on, give me one second.
Forty-two hundred is ballots only, Julie?
Give me one second. Let me find my paper.
Oh, okay. Oh, I thought you were talking to someone else. I'm sorry.
No. I'm digging out my postage paper. Because we had, um, the school ballots. So that, because if the school ballot was included for that, we had to, um, mail out eleven-hundred-and-forty-five of them at ninety-five cents each. And then you had to put postage on the eleven-forty-five at ninety-five cents each for that, for the school ballots, for the ones that got the ballots. And then the town portion, because we had twelve-hundred-and-fifty-five of them go out at seventy-five cents each. And then you had to pay twelve-hundred or do twelve-hundred-and-fifty-five at seventy-five cents for return. So that's why when I ask people to return, please, please to return their ballots so that we can recoup some of the postage back. You know what I mean? So it doesn't.
Okay.
So hopefully it'll help with the offset, um, the, the postage a little.
Okay. Um, I think one of Jenny's questions was the cost to re-warn.
Well, I know to warn the, at least to put it in the banner, it was eleven-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars to post that for the three consecutive weeks. To put it in the news guide, it was, I think, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and then you times that by three.
So we're up to about six thousand now, right? Okay.
I don't know. I don't have the math with me.
With the, the three times, the warning times is for the special bond article, right? And so, um, which I'm assuming needs to be done again as well, obviously. So, um, then there's also the warning, warning, which is of the general ballot. So we're talking two, two new warnings, essentially, one of them being three times in a row.
But can I also make a statement that, just so that they know that we did, um, we do, are eligible to do reimbursement through the state because they got a grant to help with the, the posting, the ballots and all that stuff. So we have, you know, we have to, we can be reimbursed from the state on, you know, a portion of the election stuff.
Which I'm, I would, I would have to guess that would be for the first time through, but for the second time through being our error, I can imagine that anybody's gonna reimburse us for an error that we made.
Right. Well, that's, I, I still, um, seeking questions on that or response.
And that, and that is totally an assumption. I want to make that perfectly clear.
Wait, hold on, hold on. Julie, can we ask pretty much for the first batch, most of our money back from the state?
From what they said, that we can reimburse. I don't, like I said, I don't know exactly how much. They just said that we have to com, compile everything. When the reimbursement form comes in, we have to make sure that, like I said, we have all our receipts and all that stuff that when it's time to reimburse. But I, I can't honestly say how much we'll get back at this time.
Okay, and is that because of COVID?
Yes.
So, uh, but essentially, the, the, the point is that it's going to cost the town, what, whatever this number is, that's what it's gonna cost the town. If it didn't happen, then the grant would have, you wouldn't have paid anything or, or that would have reduced whatever we paid. So whatever it costs to do this over again, that is the cost of the error.
Exactly.
So I can address, I'll address a couple of the other ones. Jenny, I'm sorry you're still unmuted, so if I missed something, help me out. Um, I don't think there's any doubt, um, from, from the board members. You know, we haven't discussed it, obviously, because we're here tonight to, to, to discuss it. Um, but I don't think there's any doubt by the board members as to who is responsible for, um, this problem. I, I think we're all in agreement as to where that, um, responsibility lies. Um, what was, what were a couple of your other ones? I knew I could answer a couple of the other ones pretty quickly.
I asked why Dave was doing all the addresses. I mean, you paid him a thousand dollars to do the report. Did that include the, the administrative work of putting addresses together? That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I think.
Administrative assistant who's supposed to be doing that kind of thing.
I think that's a question, I think that's a question that's gonna get asked tonight. I, I know it is. Um, and, um, I guess at this time, we can ask that question. Does anybody have a problem with that? I mean, it's, it's a legitimate question. I don't, I don't have the answer. Um, uh, I don't know if anyone, any board member does. I think, Linda, can you, can you answer that question?
What was the question?
Well, why, why David Adams was the one putting the addresses together, um, instead of the executive assistant? Is that correct?
If I'm not mistaken, if I'm not mistaken on the, the town report, I am one of the few ones to receive one that, uh, uh, I mean, it, it looks like Linda was paid sixty thousand dollars this year. What is she doing?
Well, that's, I think that's a different question. Let's.
Right, but, but I, my understanding, Dave was coming in to teach, um, the, the staff how to do the town report, not do it for them.
Well, let's, let's not spread rumors. Well, right, so, so let's get back to the question, which was, I believe the question was why David Adams is the one who put the addresses together for the, for the town report and not the executive assistant or, or someone under the select board? Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so.
Because the town, the addresses come from the town clerk's voter checklist.
That doesn't answer why Dave was doing it instead of Linda.
I, I don't understand what you mean, Jenny, because it comes from the town clerk and I don't know how, whether it's on a flash drive, but it goes to David there, from there. It's all a download and export off of that computer. I don't have that on my computer. It's the voter checklist.
Can I, uh, jump in here?
Yes, Dave.
Basically, uh, the voter checklist is supplied to me on a, on a, uh, thumb drive. I take that list and massage it as I, uh, explained before. And in the process of doing that, the, uh, names and the actual addresses got out of alignment. That happened on my computer. It happened under my, uh, direct, uh, supervision. Uh, I have tried to figure out what happened. I've spent hours and hours trying to figure out what happened. I have no answer. No, I cannot technically tell you what went wrong. All I can tell you is that it did. Now, as to who has responsibility and what my position in, in this is. At the time that the, it was time to do the town report, it came to the responsibility of the select board to do the town report. As someone who had done it before, I proposed to the town report as an independent contractor to assist with the development and preparation of the town report for printing. The select board unanimously voted and indicated to me that they had done so, that I was to do that for the total amount of twelve hundred dollars. I kept track of my hours.
That's, that's incorrect. That's incorrect, Dave. Total amount was one thousand dollars, not to exceed a thousand.
I'm sorry, you are correct. You are correct. One thousand dollars. I kept track of my hours and, uh, based my, uh, proposal on the fifty hours of work to do it. At this particular time, I'm about a hundred-and-ten to a hundred-and-fifteen hours of work that I've spent on putting this together. And while I'm online, I would like to go ahead and make one further comment that I find it interesting that you would expect your person who is working full-time, uh, namely Linda, to pick up an additional hundred hours of work to put together the town report. I, I'm speaking personally. I think that's completely unreasonable. I think it, it has to be done separately because the timing on it is different than anything else that the town does. The reports, when they come in, have to be handled and reformatted. The budgets are ready at a given time and you only have something like five days to, to, uh, put in the budget. At that same time, people have to be paid, accounts payable has to be done. At that same time, people have to be paid, accounts payable has to be done. And to expect that the same person is gonna do that to those two jobs together is a completely unres- un, uh, unacceptable expectation.
Thanks, Dave.
Does anyone have any other questions for me?
I, I have one question. Um, when you were, when you were compiling the town report in a simple yes or no answer to this would be sufficient for me. When you were putting the town report together, um, did you train anybody in this office on any part of putting the town report together? Did you do any training whatsoever?
Specifically, did I train an individual? The answer is no. Have I, have I, have I written several, uh, explicit directions on how different parts of it is done? I've got three or four pages of documentation that I, that I, that are, uh.
That's fine, David. Simple yes or no is fine. That was, that's fine. Thank you.
Point, though, I think that, that did require a little bit of clarification. Because while he didn't train, he wrote standard operating procedures for how to do it. And I, I think that's important to know.
Okay.
However, if, if what we did wasn't realistic, and it sounds like it was, what we did was we contracted with Dave not just to do the town report, but to do a knowledge transfer so that someone else could pick it up.
Exactly.
He made some valid points, and that may not have been realistic from the get-go.
Then someone should have come to us and said that this is not a valid point.
That's correct.
And, and nobody did. Once again, nobody came to the board, they kept us in the dark and said this is not valid. And Dave's experience over the years of doing the town report, in my opinion, should have known that that was an unrealistic expectation.
Was the expectation completely different?
Well. Uh, and, and maybe it wasn't, and, and that's, and that's, that's a fair assessment, Bob. But, but, uh, one hundred percent, our request at a board meeting in September was knowledge transfer. Right, I read that. Then, but our request was one hundred and ten percent knowledge transfer to town staff.
This was the motion by Bob, that we hired Dave Adams as an independent contractor, prepare, for him to prepare the town report and to transfer knowledge onto town employees for future. And Mr. Percy seconded, and the motion carried by all.
That's right.
Yeah, so, and my point is, it wasn't his original, that was not in his proposal. That's something we added because we wanted, that's right, that was my motion, to, to make sure that we added that so we were in a position going forward.
Right, and before we voted on that motion.
We have discussion.
Discussion, and I was adamant that for me to vote for that particular thing, uh, for that motion, I was adamant that knowledge transfer was gonna happen, and it didn't.
Yeah, and I was adamant about that.
You were, absolutely. I was, yeah, I was not the only one. I didn't want to sound like that, sorry.
Give it back up.
Just a second, Jim. You know, you people have to remember, we're in COVID times. We have restricted people, a number of people in this office. Dave is an elderly person who needs to be protected highly. We didn't have him coming back and forth to the office, and I certainly wasn't going to invite myself to his home. And I think that, that needs to be recognized.
I think we're, I think we're. No, I'm not trying to publicly shame. I'm trying to get to the bottom of what happened.
I wasn't.
Right, no, I, I understand, Bob.
May I speak, please?
I, I think we're in a debate right now, something that we said.
Oh, I, I just want to make a comment. I feel that if the board made that, made that resolution, or whatever we want to call it, and I was the vendor that was involved in it, then it was the responsibility of the board to communicate that to me so that I knew what you expected, and you did not do that.
All right, thank you, Dave, for your comment. All right, is there any other comment out there? Please raise your hand.
Um, I'm gonna go in order. Um, Jim, I'm sorry, you've already commented, and there's other people waiting that have not gone, so I'm gonna call on Steve. And Steve, if you can unmute yourself and give us your full name, please, since it's not here.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is actually Donna Lozad. I'm using Steve's computer. Um, I just want to say, uh, this is incredibly disappointing. I'm not sure how an entity can rectify or assist in a situation if they don't know about it. Um, just going forward as a suggestion, perhaps, uh, there should be a policy that ensures the board knows when the town report is almost completed, how it's coming along, if it's ready to go. Perhaps even a second person should know how to do the town report in the event that a single person that may be in charge of it cannot do it for whatever reason. Um, but I also, you know, I'm also concerned about cost, as someone else mentioned. But my question is, um, when can those of us who have not received reports anticipate receiving them? Thank you.
You're welcome, Donna. Were they mailed all?
Um, so they were all, I believe, mailed, the final ones were mailed today, and a bulk of them were mailed yesterday. So that's a matter of the post office getting them to you now, but they have been delivered to the post office. Um, I, I can't give an estimate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going down the list here. We have, next is Rose Marie Pelletier. You can unmute yourself, please. And, and give us your name, even though I just said it. There we go.
Go ahead, please. She unmuted?
Um, she is unmuted, and maybe is something.
No, she's still muted.
No, she's not.
In the right corner, it says, uh.
It says mute, that's to mute her.
Okay.
She is unmuted. Um, Rose Marie, um, I am going, you seem to be having problems with your, um.
Oh, yeesh. Why don't we just go to the next person?
I'm gonna go to the next person, then we're gonna come back to you, see if we can recti- if you can rectify your microphone situation, okay? I'm just gonna mute you, even though it's not working. I'm, I'm going to go to, this is to Kristen Reed. Can you unmute yourself, please, and give your name?
Sure, can you hear me? It's Kristen Reed. Yeah, I, just a quick comment, I'm having trouble hearing Bob Jarvis, and I'm not sure who on the select board is off to my left who's speaking. So if maybe they could identify themselves as well when they speak, that would be helpful. Thanks.
Uh, all right, so Rose Marie, let's try it again, okay? And if not, I am going to. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Rose Marie, and then if it doesn't work, I'm going to give you my, I'll give you my.
I think I'm unmuted.
Here you are, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my question is regards to the fifty hours. Who was it that determined it would take fifty hours and it ended up taking a hundred and ten?
I'll answer that. Uh. Am I still muted?
You're all set, Dave.
No, you're fine, David.
Okay. I sat down, looked at my records from previous years, and I sent, uh, I sent a proposal to the town for the fifty hours.
Okay, so I have a follow-up question then, Dave.
Yeah.
What was it, because you have a lot of experience having done this. What was it about this particular annual report that made it more than double what it usually is?
Well, because I, I got a request to help with documentation. Now, the board assumed or, uh, expected, and what they did, they expected me along with documentation to do training. I did not get that part of the message. I did, however, spend a great deal of time on documentation. I, if any.
Dave, do you usually do that? Is that usually part of the process?
Doing the documentation?
Yeah.
No. Uh, that's something I know how to do, and I basically do it from memory. But when you write technical documentation, uh, each line can be a forest that can send you down the tubes, and you have to be extremely careful with your documentation to make sure that the results you expect are the ones you get. And proper documentation takes a gargantuan amount of time. In addition, the time, the reason it took more time this year is because we couldn't meet face-to-face to go over issues. You can sit down in a conversation and do ten or fifteen issues in a, in half an hour. When you can't meet face-to-face, the time component of what's needed to get things done moves up almost exponentially. So it is, uh, other than that, the things just seem to take longer this year. I don't have any other answers for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Rose Marie, are you all set?
I am.
Very much, Rose Marie. Uh, okay, uh, Rose Marie is probably putting her hand down. Um, Jim Kosis has his hand up again.
Is there any other button?
Any other? There is no one else with a hand up? Oh, there is now, actually, Margaret Cody. Sorry, Jim, you're gonna be put to the back of the line.
Jim, we'll come to you as soon as we're done with everybody else, I promise.
Um, Margaret, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hey, everybody, this is Margaret Cody. Um, I just, you know, from just listening to the conversation, I feel like there's some basic issues of kind of judgment with regard to escalation, and then also some, perhaps, uh, computer literacy, um, issues also that need to be addressed. So I'm just wondering when we're gonna hear from the board, kind of the action plan around, uh, how to address those two themes from this incident.
So I, I think that what you're asking, help me, uh, is that you're speaking about a general ability to work with computer technology, the way information is being disseminated?
So the process that Dave was describing is a very basic mail merge. Um, and, um, the fact that we still don't know the source of that error after many, many hours of investigation means that our chances of avoiding it in the future are unknown to us because we don't know the source of it. Um, and if that's the type of thing that he's writing documentation for, there's so much documentation about how to do simple mail merges and how to, you know, create reports like the one that I'm looking at. Um, so I'm just kind of, you know, asking myself, you know, is the, is the capability in-house to perform some of these tasks which are pretty simple? And, you know, the whole world's been working remote for the last year, so we all have a pretty good handle ourselves on what the impact on productivity is of COVID, and I just can't agree that it makes tasks exponentially harder, um, with basic computer literacy in place. So I'm just wondering how we're going to kind of step up, um, some of the capabilities here such that this can all just be more efficient and, uh, cost-effective.
The point, we agree.
I don't think it. It's Mike Gardner. Um, uh, even though, even though we agree with you, I don't think it answers your question, neither at all. So, um, one of the things, one of the things that I think we have, um, which came before this, to be honest with you, is the new administrative assistant that we hired, um, appears to have some pretty extraordinary computer skills on the surface, some IT skills. So bringing Tim in, um, that, and that was one of the reasons that we brought him in was for his IT skills, um, coming, coming forward into the office. So that's a hope of ours, whether it comes to fruition, time will tell. Um, you know, I, I, you know, I mean, I don't know if that answers your question totally. Um, I think, I think one of the other things that, that we have to do is, um, from a, from a select board standpoint, we have to be more on top of what's going on and that kind of stuff.
So to that point, uh, the select board has identified our lack of, uh, IT literacy, I guess. Uh, the lack of IT literacy as, as an issue. Um, and to, uh, to Mike's point, that was why we, we put out and, uh, and put in the job description for the individual that we just hired, that we wanted somebody with those skills. So it, it has been identified, but it, those aren't easy things to shore up. Um, you know, you can't just, uh, uh, it, it doesn't happen overnight. However, we have, like, as he just said, we hired somebody just recently who has some pretty extensive IT skills, and we're hopeful that that's gonna raise the level of everybody in the office.
That's helpful. I think, you know, corollary to that is some process checks. You know, spot checking, the mailing, um, that type of thing. So I think, you know, thank you for the update on the skills of the recent hire. I think, uh, you know, some, some process, uh, some process refinements obviously are in order too.
Yes, thank you.
Um, okay, so now we're Jim.
Jim.
Go ahead, Jim.
Hi, sorry, uh, basically, I wanted to bring it to a point that, um, I think I'm not ready to have people bashing other people tonight. I think we, you've got more on your plate to try to, um, try to rectify the whole situation. And if we can do a, an inspection or case, what happens later on, and have some kind of an open meeting like this, again, not an executive session, but maybe just an open meeting to kind of just find out exactly what happened and how it's gonna be rectified. Um, I, I do just want to say that unfortunately, everything that has happened in the past couple of years has really run smoothly. And I'm just gonna advocate that the, um, auditors in the past have done a good job with the annual report. And maybe, um, if a decision wasn't made at such a fast moment without knowing how everything was gonna work out with the next annual report or what's gonna be down the line, um, maybe we should have discussed that first. So I'm gonna advocate that we just get back to that situation of the auditors, uh, internal auditors being on hand to. They only spent in the last year forty-one hundred dollars. I'm hearing reports all over the place that it was a huge expense and everything. So then we can move forward to find out exactly what we need to do to go forward. But we can't just make a, a, a suggestion to eliminate something and then move forward and then find a big error like this. So I, I, I just appreciate it.
I think we gotta stop you. You, you have to fix the topic for the meeting.
That's fine.
It's an emergency meeting, sorry about that.
Sorry.
Um, and I did want to point out that, uh, I did want to point out that it, uh, that in, in the past, when you're talking about who has done the town report, it has been the same as it is this year.
All right, thank you.
May I add a que- a comment to Jim's?
No, thank you. We're done. We need to proceed, please. Um, we do have new hands raised again. We have, uh, Jenny Duer would like to speak again. Go ahead, Jenny, you're next.
Thanks, Rebecca. Um, yeah, it, it is the internal auditors who have done the town report, and there were three of them last year. Um, and that is important and to, to discuss tonight, I believe, because this is, this wouldn't have happened if they were still in place. Um, so, and I never did, really did get an answer why Linda wasn't involved in doing the, um, mailing and why Dave was doing all the addresses because it's on his computer, it's on the thumb drive, none of that makes sense. She doesn't have Excel on the computer. I'm not, I'm not shaming here, I'm just trying to work out who does what in that town office. Um, and, and I also didn't get an answer to the question of why nothing happened over the weekend? Why was the board not informed? Yes, Jamie, you all were blindsided. Why were you blindsided? That should never happen.
Thank you.
I again ask if I can speak?
I think.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Dave.
Try to keep it a little shorter, Dave.
I'll try to keep it very short. I want to make very clear that over the past ti- years that I have done the town report, that I have had extremely little support from any of the other auditors. I was in the process of teaching them, but in actual fact, when I gave them, uh, the latest auditors, gave them specific tasks that they could learn, they did nothing, and in fact, tried to blindside me by not doing the work.
I'm gonna interrupt, that's not my question.
Yes, I think we're shutting down that conversation.
Yeah, all right, sorry, we're done. We're not going there.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so.
So let's, let's answer Jenny's questions, because we did, we didn't answer those, if we can. Um, so, so the select board, the select board doesn't have an answer, at least I don't have an answer, as to why nothing happened over the weekend. Um, and I think Julie has elaborated to that. Linda, can you elaborate to why nothing? why nothing happened over the weekend?
Actually, I didn't have, I didn't check my emails Sunday, and that's when I received an email from Julie that told me and Dave that there were nine totes at the town office.
But didn't we know on Thursday that we had a problem with at least four?
Well, I thought it was one or two, but I didn't realize that it was four, but yes. And normally, each year we do receive a certain amount of totes that come back as undeliverable. So I really, I, I don't know what to say. I'm just so extremely distraught at the whole thing, and it's very upsetting, and I want to apologize to everyone because it's far reaching, and I do realize.
And what was, what was the other question that she had that wasn't answered? I, I think that was, Dave was trying to answer that, but
I want to know why Dave was doing the, um,
Why he was doing the address, yeah. Why, but I guess that's part of
Is that part of the annual report?
Putting it together.
Yes, part of it.
That's part of putting the annual report together, so we are under that impression right now.
Yes, that's
That answer
You have to, he has to have, oh, sorry, Julie.
That's fine.
Julie Weber, town clerk. Dave has to have the addresses from my system to be able to give them to the printers. So there, that's why he needs to have the addresses. It's so that one that goes to print, they have the at corrected, hopefully corrected addresses, which will go back. But yes, each year, we normally get back three or four totes of unreturned town reports because of infants, insufficient addresses and stuff. So we can't say it's just as far as the office staff not having the correct mailing addresses. It's also the residents' responsibility that if they move, or if they change their mailing addresses, that they need to contact the office because if we don't know that their address is changed, we can't fix it in the system so we can correct the issue. So instead of just blaming all of us on the part that the ballots didn't get out, it actually should be all of us that the whole entire town should play a role in it, that yes, the residents aren't the one that compile the book, however, they should play a responsibility of giving the correct mailing addresses.
Julie, I just gotta break in. I mean, I think we know that that's not what happened this year. I, what you're saying is correct as far as a, uh, as, as an ongoing process, but we know what happened here, and it wasn't that, uh, that, that residents had the wrong addresses, right? Um, however, I will point out that if it's, if it is true that you get three totes, you know, up to three totes or so back every year, then on Thursday, we may not have had enough information to know that something was wrong. By Friday, we knew. By Friday, when I say we, I mean the town, not necessarily.
We didn't know.
Those of us who should have known, uh, but didn't, um, so I, I can see some, some, uh, I can see some things there to say that Thursday, there wasn't enough information to know that anything was outside of the, of norm. But by Friday, if I, from the notes I took tonight, by Friday, we knew nine
Basically, to be honest with you. No, I, and I agree, I agree that on Thursday, if it's a normal thing to have three or four totes back, um, but there, I think there's also some
With like hundreds of teleports returned?
So, but on Friday, on Friday, we knew, the town staff knew on Friday that there was, you know, a problem. So, um, we haven't, I hope that answered your questions anyway. Some of them, obviously, we can't, excuse me, we, we don't have the answer to the, you know, um, blindsided part of it, so.
I'm good, Mike. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Um, okay, so, uh, the person labeled MP, I'm assuming it's Marlena Pellon, go ahead and unmute yourself and give your name.
Hello, this is Marlena Pellon.
Good evening. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I have a, just a couple little questions here. Um, first, wasn't Linda's new job description that was released to the public and posted on the website, um, indicating that her new role would include, um, completing the town report, and the entire premise was that the town was supposed to purchase the software that David Adams uses on his laptop, install it on the town's computer so that she could be taught using the town's system to learn to transfer that knowledge. My second question is, the select board, um, just made a statement, I'm sorry, Michael, I think it was Michael, that stated, uh, the select board needs to pay more attention to what's going on in the office and take more accountability, blah, blah, blah. You, you, we had a town administrator position whose job it was to oversee town operations to hold staff accountable. So this just reinforces the need for that role. And three, on a totally unrelated, uh, topic, but related to this whole, um, ish, issue with resending out the ballots, I do have a question on, um, the ballot article that came out on the special yellow ballot sheet. Article one just says to hear reports of town officials and take action thereon. It, it's unclear the way it's written, I was wondering if you could explain that a little bit better? And the second article says to see if the voters will authorize its treasurer to receive taxes until they become delinquent. I've asked before, and I ask again, when the treasurer receives in the delinquent taxes, the treasurer is paid a fee stipend, uh, an amount, but when the treasurer's not present and people show up to pay their taxes, and they pay in cash or whatever, and receipts are written by town staff, why is the treasurer paid when other people participate in the task? So I'm wondering if you can just clarify the two ballot articles, thank you.
But I'm wondering if, uh, is it technical? Talk over somebody else. I wonder if they can
Well, it doesn't matter.
We can't answer unrelated questions tonight?
I'll, I'll take care of it. Yep.
Yeah, there you go.
We're at an emergency meeting tonight, Marlena, and we are not answering unrelated questions, um, to anything other than the town report. So all of the last questions that you asked that were not related to the town report are definitely not getting answered by anyone here on the board, um, tonight. We, we, we will not answer those questions. So, um, I think did, did we have any questions that she had that were pertaining to the town report? I think one was a software question, um, in Linda's job description. So, okay, so we can answer those questions. Those are the two we can answer.
It, it, it actually is not in her job
Is that in her job?
Yep, sorry, guys.
It's actually not officially part of her job description, except for the part that says other duties as assigned. And that, so Right, compile information, not, not prepare. So, um, Right, so, uh, well, so that's the answer to that. It wasn't in the job description, but at the same time, it was, uh, it was part of what we had asked when we, when we
When we voted in September, that is what we asked. Now, I don't know, I, I don't know if we can I don't remember being part of a conversation about software. Uh, I don't, is this, I don't remember this board.
I, I remember a discussion about software, but it was not getting the software off of Dave's computer. It was investigating whether or not we could find different software and change the format of the town report and, and upgrade it to something more
Okay, yeah. Oh, oh, right, okay. I do remember that conversation, but I didn't remember a conversation about, you know, and, and I'm not saying it wasn't there, I'm just saying I don't remember that. I'm usually pretty good at remembering what we discussed, and I only have missed a couple of meetings at most, one, one, I believe.
And we, and we, we did talk about that recently, though. We knew it was too late to put this in the town report, but we did wanna investigate, uh, whether or not there was a better way to do this, can it be more automated? It does seem like it's pretty labor intensive to put together the town report.
We were talking about starting to go and look at other towns and asking them how they prepare theirs, if they use a different software, if there's something they wanna show us, uh, you know, to start looking at other options, because it is pretty antiquated, I think. Right.
Correct.
Correct.
That, that's correct, okay.
Um, okay, so, next is Laura, if you wanna unmute yourself and give your name.
Uh, yes, my name is Laura Frenzel Clark, and this is a question for either Dave or Julie, and it's a two-part question, I guess. Um, so I am looking at a thing that came from you for my husband for his absentee ballot, and on the front of that is a label. So my question is, on the town book, is that a label that goes there, or is that imprinted on the book?
Um, so Laura, I'm sorry, uh, we, we can't take questions that are anything of error in the town, in the, in this
Actually, it, great, but what I'm asking is, on the town book, which is what we are discussing tonight, the outside part of how it is sent to somebody, is that a label that is put on there, or is it imprinted onto the sheet?
Printed onto the book.
So it is not a label?
Well, this time it was. It was printed, the, the book was printed, went out to the post office, the cover was printed with addresses on it. The book went out to the post office. The post office returned the books to the town. The folks that worked on re- on the problem took paper labels and pasted them over the pre-printed addresses, so that in fact, if you did receive one with a label on it, a, a secondary label under your name, then, yes, it, it was one of the ones that had a wrong address. If you peel back the label and look, you'll see the address that was assigned to you in error by the computer.
Okay, 'cause I think that's what some people are trying to understand here, um, based on some questions is, was this a label that was printed, or was this directly printed onto the books? Like, you, it's embossed on that paper, and I think that may help answer some people's questions as to what some of the issues are, and why, you know, um, different things were happening. So thank you, Dave.
We believe, we believe that there were several of the books that actually got delivered. I have seen at least one where there was no label, additional label required. So some people are going to get the books without an additional label over them, but, uh, it is our belief that most people will receive books that have an additional label added to them.
Dave? Dave?
Yes.
Um, I, I'm gonna need to ask you, the board has been asking, you're, we're gonna need to ask you to stop answering unless we ask you to answer, okay? And I'm, Bob would like to speak to some of this, all right? Go ahead, Bob.
I think, uh, I, I think he actually answered it. So, uh, first of all, I'm sorry, Laura, I thought you were asking a different question.
That's okay, Bob.
So, uh, and, and, but, and I think the answer is, they were intentionally, they were, the intent was to send them out pre-printed with the addresses on them.
As it's done every year.
As it's done every year. The only reason anybody would use labels was for the correction.
Okay, that, that's what I, I think what's, that's what, because in your meeting, you're saying labels were put on these books, and people are asking, well, why was this not, you know what I mean? Like, why were things not being done? So I think there, there is, that's, I'm just trying to clarify why is there this big concern about the addresses? Was it that the labels, the labels themselves were incorrect, or the printing on the book was incorrect? So it's the printing that was on the book that is incorrect, not labels?
Uh, that's correct. It was
Thank you. Okay, now, after Laura, there are no more hands raised unless you wanna give people a moment. Um, I'm gonna look on the Facebook Live.
On the blue one.
I'm not, I, I mean, I'm seeing like little comments, but they're not ones that I would Okay, so a couple went up? Okay, so Jenny, put up her hand again. Go ahead, Jenny.
Hi, it's, it's actually not for myself. I have a, an email here from someone else who's on, who's unable to raise his hand.
Okay.
He said, "Listening to the emergency meeting, can't find a way to raise my hand or enter a chat, so maybe you can relay this." One, how come they did not receive totes of absentee ballots? Two, is there a correlation between this issue and no longer having external auditors? Uh, he, I think maybe he means internal, I'm not sure. Three, I find it rather surprising that the select board engages in what looks like a quote shaming exercise, and instead does not simply accept responsibility and provide a short-term solution and suggestions for long-term solution.
Thank you.
Well, who is, Jenny, who was that question from?
They're from Franz.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't know if Franz is last name, um,
Rinche.
Yes, yes. I couldn't think of it, sorry. I know where he lives, and I can take you to his house, but
All right, so no more public
Yeah, that's correct, it's from Franz Bencheck.
Yes. So, I don't, I don't think that there's been any public shaming by anybody. Um, I think we're trying to get to the bottom of what happened. I think we're trying to figure out, um, how to fix it. Um, apparently, we don't know why it happened. Um, and I don't think there's any way to find out why it happened. Um, you know, I have to believe David when he says he doesn't know what happened. Um, so I, in, in public shaming, I don't think, I think the select board has taken responsibility for this. I know I have. Um, I, I don't know what else I could do, um, as a board member to, other than what I've done for the last two days, to take responsibility for this. Yes, it falls on us. Um, but on the flip side of it, I think as bosses to, um, 'cause that's what we are, um, I think, I think we have to, to figure out, try to figure out what did happen and why, and I'm sure, I don't think we've figured out some of it, and I don't know if we can. Um, but I do, I do think that we have taken responsibility for this as a board. Um, I know, I know that, um, well, you know, I, in, in, I don't remember the other questions you had. Maybe Bob can answer one or two.
Yeah, so I, I just wanna say that, uh, definitely this falls on the board. Uh, there, there's been, and it's, I didn't think I heard anyone deflecting the blame, but if, if it came off that way, this is definitely a select board responsibility. That's a true statement. As far as fixing it going forward, um, I, we did talk about that, and we have had plans in the works, and we have taken some steps to improve some of these processes. It's unfortunate that this happened before those things are really i- in fruition, uh, have come to fruition, but we've hired an additional person who does have, uh, uh, IT knowledge. We've hired the additional staff that we need to help with this going forward. Um, uh, uh, and I think, uh, and I think we have to all remember that when, when you say this wouldn't have happened had we had, uh, such and such a person working, that's pure speculation.
Harry Percy, and the other part of this is why we call this meeting, is we're trying to be transparent to the public of what has happened and what is going to happen.
Um, you have Kristen Reed with her hand up again. Kristen, you wanna unmute yourself and introduce yourself?
Yep, it's Kristen Reed again. Um, just real quickly, I think, I guess I would have to disagree. It's not just someone on the staff with IT knowledge, um, but going forward, I hope you look at double-checking what goes out before it goes out. Um, nobody's perfect, it's just, you just need to double-check. And then my question is, when do you expect, or when can we expect to vote on the town budget and the articles, more or less?
We're gonna discuss that as soon as we're done with public comment.
Thanks.
So there are no other hands, so
Get my smartphone off.
Oh, let's make sure, yep, unmute you. I'm gonna mute. And I'm gonna mute, Julie, I'm just gonna mute you a while. Or mute yourself, please. I gotcha. All right, go ahead.
Okay, so we've learned what everybody has had to say, we've answered questions, we know what. The lawyers have said, what VLCT has said, what the state of Vermont has said. I think we should start from the beginning and rewarn, not that I want to, because it's gonna be expensive, it's probably gonna be, I'm just guessing, around six thousand dollars. But I think it's something we have to do.
I have to agree, we have to make sure that the, all of our citizens, when they go into the voting booth, have all of the information that they need, we can't disenfranchise anyone. These, uh, reports, uh, need to be in hand, uh, the reports need to be in hand, and I, I, uh, so as far as the dates are concerned, I think that's what we need to decide. We need to make sure that we're, uh, dotting our i's and crossing our t's, and very good points, by the way, from the people who said we need, we need checks and balances. And we need a checklist, and we need somebody looking over the shoulders of individuals and making sure that, uh, uh, that work is being spot checked. Um, that's definitely a true statement, I think we've made some steps in that area, um, certainly for auditing and other things. But anyway, uh, now we need to talk about, when can we, we need to put this back out to vote, in my opinion, as quickly as possible, adhering to state statute and adhering to the, the warning, uh.
Correct.
Uh, the, the warning, uh, guideline.
All right, Mike?
Well, I totally agree with this, and, and in my opinion, I think we should do this in two steps. Um, I, I, right now, I'd like to make a motion that we go back to the town, or back and rewarn the entire. Um, warning minus the school, because that will still take place.
We don't want that.
We don't want that anyways, but the vote will be, will be the entire town minus school.
Correct.
I'd like to make that motion, and then I think we should discuss a date.
I second that.
Okay. Um, Bob?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Ronnie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay, not less than thirty, and not more than forty.
So, so I think we need to, no, you're right, I think we need to ask Julie a question, um.
Julie, can you unmute yourself, please?
Julie, unmute yourself, please.
I, yes, actually, you were talking about, um, rewarming, but you only said town, the town article ballot. When we rewarn, we have to remember that we have to do the special bond vote also.
Yep.
So.
Well, I can amend.
I only just want you, because you only said town, I want to make sure that you know we have to add the special on there, too.
So I'll amend that motion to include the town hall portion of the, of the warning.
If you want to, enjoy, it's, it's what used to be on the floor, so it's Articles One, it's actually the approval of the report. And Two, which I forgot what it is, and Number Three, which is the bond.
Two was to accept the money for the treasurer, I believe. The treasurer to accept the, the money, because those are our two floor vote questions that we always ask, that's why they're on the special one.
Okay.
And I will second that, still.
All right. Bob?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Ronnie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay, we're rewarming.
So now I have a question for you, Julie, um, the, the ballot, um, because, because we have an error in the ballot. And we might as well clean that up at the same exact time, um, for the select board position for one year, stage two years. Um, so, so I'm, I think we might as well clean it up at the same time, how long does it take to get those ballots back?
Okay, so once we do the warning and all that, ballots have to be back within twenty days, the same timeframe like we do a regular one.
I mean.
They have to be back twenty days prior to an election, because I gotta have time for people to be able to request the absentee.
Right, so when you order them from wherever, how long does it take to get them?
Well, it depends, this time, our ballots were supposed to be delivered to us on February tenth, we didn't get the ballots until February twelfth at four o'clock. So, and I don't know why it took so long, but normally, our, like I said, ballots are supposed to be to us twenty days prior to an election.
But how, how far in advance do you, what's the lead time for ordering?
So, so I'm thinking that if, once we figure out the date and time of, or the, the day of the election. That, because we're keeping the ballot articles and everything, all of our position, candidate positions, every ballot article and everything. Will be, you know, because we're not changing, and as long as we correct the issue with the two-year term. You know, to make it one year versus the two-year, I don't think it will take that long to do once we. Because we just gotta make sure all of our ba, which all of our ballot articles were correct on the ballots, except for the term for the two-year selection.
Right, so we need, we, so we need a timeframe from the time you order them.
Right, well, I can't, I can't give you a time for, that's what I'm saying, I can't give you an exact timeframe, because. We have to be able to warn the meeting forty days within, you know, no more than forty, no less than thirty. So once we have the exact.
When did we order the, the ballots that came in on the twelfth of February, Julie, what day did you order those?
Um, let's see, I don't have my paper exactly on this, when I did it. Um, I have to look and let you know exactly tomorrow, I don't have that with me.
Well, the date for the ballot for Articles was the twenty, yes, I remember.
Right.
Um.
It's usually like, so normally, like, for example, that, like, we did the town warning that we had to post on January first, or, um, the thirty-first. So I sent my ballot request in, like, a couple days after, like, we did the candidacy. You know, once I had my list of cand, so it had to been like, prior, you know, like, the first week of February. That one, that I sent in our request to the ballot.
You know, so. The town warning has to be at least thirty, but no more than forty days from the vote. How long button down a, a warning to make sure, and make a hundred percent sure? So, uh, I'm sorry, Julie, that's not to you, that's.
No. So, can I make a comment? So, because Rebecca, I always spoke to Rebecca today, and I was just looking to happen to say, for example. So, if we were to do an election on April thirteenth, which is a Tuesday, would be the second Tuesday. The fortieth day would be March fifth, so we would have to have our warning by Friday, March fifth. So you guys could approve, if we did a meeting on the fourth, you guys could approve our warning, so then the thirty day is March fifteenth. To if we did the election on the thirteenth.
That has to be a Tuesday, we, we, if we put it on the thirteenth, we're gonna have a problem with the town hall.
Right.
Um, it, I, my suggestion was that we rewarn it tomorrow, like, that's what I'm doing tomorrow. And, but it is, but it.
Thirty first or thirty first.
Thirty first or thirty first, maybe.
That gives you a couple days.
Well, can I just ask a question about the ballots, the only thing wrong with the ballot is the one year, it says two.
Yeah.
Can we still keep those ballots, but rectify?
Has the wrong date on it.
Has the wrong date on it, so we have to reprint everything, okay, all right, I was just gonna ask, how would we know? If they send in the right ballot, because it'll have the date on it.
Personally, I think when you're looking at timing of this, um, uh, and, and our lawyer did say he would look over the entire town warning before we put it out. If we're doing, so tomorrow is the twenty-four. Sorry, I have to add seven.
If we do the thirty first.
That's more, yeah.
That's more than.
That's more than enough time.
If we do, if we vote on March thirty first.
Before thirty-five.
Right.
It's a week of them.
That's a Wednesday.
The thirty first?
The thirty first is a Wednesday, I was thinking the thirtieth or the thirty first, now the thirtieth keeps it consistent to a Tuesday.
I would keep it to a Tuesday.
Which would give us, which would give us the twenty-ninth of March to do our town meeting, which is a Monday night, which is back to consistency. But that would, that would put us, that would have, our warning would have to be done by Friday.
Um, our warning would have to be done, what I would have to do is, I would come in here, or I could sit at home and do it as well, I guess, in my office. Um, to, to, I would sit down with a calendar, a paper calendar, and I would map out exactly where everything needs to happen. In order to hit that thirtieth, that date, and I would do the town warning tomorrow. Um, I would flesh out those three success, uh, successive warnings for the town hall bond, and then I would also. Um, we would find one informational meeting, I do recommend, uh, potentially continuing the one for tomorrow night, no, it's, nope, never mind, the warning's dead. I retract what I just said.
Right.
Um, uh, we would do one more informational meeting, and we would have that, I believe it's within ten days of the election, so we'd have it somewhere between the twentieth and the thirtieth. And I would put all this on a map, I'd make sure that all of you see it, we'll get that town warning done first thing, then Julie has the materials to send to, for the ballot, she knows what to do for the ballot. Um.
I'm gonna let Mr. Fisher look at it.
And I, oh, I'm gonna have Mr. Fisher look at everything.
I, I make a motion that we, that we have our election, the new election, on the thirtieth of March. With town meeting on the twenty-ninth of March.
We can do it now.
At seven PM, um. For the town meeting, and our voting hours would be the thirtieth, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, ten to seven.
Yes, please.
Yep, okay, and then you would, you would schedule your, um, you would then schedule your early voting days based on those days, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Is that doable?
Is, yeah, is that doable, Julie?
Yes, because, yes, so I would do Sunday the twenty-eighth, and then I would do, um. Usually, I would do like March twentieth, I try to do a Saturday and a Sunday.
Okay, that's fine, as long as it's doable for you, Julie, that's fine, this one, I don't wanna, I don't want to make it so it's too hard on you.
And then I would also say that, because that, that ballot stuffing process is gargantuan, um, that, I, I mean, I can certainly come and help, Julie, but I would hope, yeah, like, the board would send help. I also think that it would be. Off a separate.
Wait, well, that's, that's another thing, so, and that would be, again, whether you guys met, would request that we mail it to every voter. Or just do it as the ones that I generally send absentee to, that they would get it, and then people have the right to still come in and vote in the office. So if I was doing it only because I can't, I honestly put in over a hundred hours of just stuffing ballots. Or just labeling and stuff, and I had ten people help me stuff the ballots and stuff. So I would recommend not mailing to every voter of the town, if they want a ballot. Then they need to call and request it by email or something, so that we're not spending all that money to send when we only, like, with the November election. The state mailed out the twenty-five hundred, we actually only got eighteen hundred people to vote. So I would just, but you guys have that choice because of COVID and stuff to make that decision. But I would strongly suggest not mailing them to all the voters, just the ones that I've been with my absentee and going forward that way.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Because it will help with the, because when they come to the polls and that they have to bring their ballots back, some people are actually not happy with that. Process.
I, I don't want to change the process, if we, if we intended a process this time, I think it would be more confusing to change it for the, for the new election.
I, I agree, I, I think whatever we did this time, we do last time, now Julie, let me, let me ask you a question, your ballots come pre-folded, or do you guys fold them all?
No, we have to fold them off, so when you guys vote, so for example, like, because you guys just had it sent out to everybody. The process to do, you have to put a label, a town clerk label on the outside of each envelope, and on the return envelope, because they don't come. Pre-labeled, so then you have to put postage on both envelopes, so you're talking, I did forty-eight hundred. Of return and whatnot, you know, because you're mailing and you return, so, and then you have to fold all the ballots. And we have to stuff them all with your ballots, your certificate, and the, and then, you know, mail them all back out.
The question is, who can do that, right? Um, well, it can't be just Julie.
And maybe.
No.
Your justices.
No, it's not just me that does the thing, I have justices of the peace and, um, my, the assistants and other people help with. Folding the ballots and stuff, you know, we try to get them all done so that we can, you know, do it, but like I said, it's, it's a long process that you have to do. If you're mailing out to everybody.
Is there, is there an outside agency that can do the folding of all of the ballots for you, because I.
That was gonna, that was gonna be my question, because I'm gonna call this, um, Will at the Secretary of State Office and ask them. How they did our November ballots, where they have all that and what the cost is and stuff, but I'm gonna do that tomorrow.
Okay, because I, I was told, I was told today that, that years ago, there was an outside agency that had proposed to fold ballots. And that, because they have a folding machine, whatever that is, I don't know, um, you know. So I, I was trying to cut down on the work, even if we have to spend a little bit of money on that, I think it would save in the long run, plus it would save on the, on the labor-intensive part of it, so. Right, but we can, we can flesh that out for sure.
Okay.
Okay, we actually, are you still thinking about comment, no? Okay.
There's no stuff in on this.
I have so much idea.
Well, most of my thing with Mike maybe I can. Okay. Bob?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Ronnie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
So tomorrow, I will first thing create that calendar, get the warning going. And we also, oh, we also have to issue cancellations, so, and we have to issue them in all the places where we post it, so I will be doing that as well tomorrow, okay? Okay. And.
Okay, so then we need a motion to go into executive.
Oh, here, wait, no one can hear you.
All right.
That's okay.
We need a motion to go into executive for personnel. Second.
Second.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye, Bob?
Aye.
And.
And we will be taking.
We may be.
We may be taking.
We may be taking action when we come out.
So what I'm gonna need to do is, it's pretty big, a lot of people, I'm gonna put everyone back into, I'm gonna put everyone back into the waiting room. And, um, then when they come out of executive session, I am going to let everyone back into the room. I'm asking in advance that everyone just please make sure your mics are muted when you come back in, um, so I'm gonna go one at a time, everyone. Let's see, it's gonna take me a moment, if you can put yourself in the waiting room, please do that, help me out. Everyone is muted, uh, hold on, let's go one, let me mute her, and then we are good to go.
I'd like to entertain a motion to come out of executive session, please.
Go, go.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye, Bob?
Aye.
Okay, we're back in regular session, we are not making any action at this time, after a long discussion. So can I entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Um, Bob?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Ronnie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Everybody, thank you, have a good night.